Always fine beside themselves.
Yes, sorry.
I'll try to go.
If I stepped out and took a quick meeting at ten o'clock.
Whatever you gotta do.
And I'll be right back. It shouldn't take more than.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll get started, please, thank you. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled committee of the whole working session. Call this meeting to order today's date is Tuesday, October twenty first, two thousand twenty five, the time is nine oh five A M. We have a full agenda today, so we'll turn this agenda over to our city administrator, Britzy Vanis Britt.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is appearance by Matt Reed from S C H, our city engineer of record. Then our first item is a review of change order number three from Utility Systems of America for the twenty twenty fourth Street Infrastructure Alley project in a decrease amount. We like those ones, Matt.
Morning, Matt.
Good morning. Yeah, why not? Start off the day on a good note, right? Well, maybe not start off the day, but continue the day on a good note. Change order number three for the alleys project, so generally speaking, the we ended up, the contractor ended up using some of the city supplied materials, and so we had originally bid the project to have them supply the materials as a result. Didn't have quite as much expense into it, directly through the project anyway, so this is a deduct in the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars.
So moved, that's the part.
A move to approve by Council Box Snyder and supported by Council Beyondish. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
All right, I will continue on to the next item. This one went the other way, unfortunately, but we're still really doing well on this project from the standpoint of budget. These just were, this actually the first item, the the E V P system at Chestnut and forth, we ended up not needing it, what that is, is because the fire department is no longer using that fire hall, at least to the extent that they were for all of their fire trucks, we don't need the emergency preemptive system there, so we just took that part of it out. It was a small deduct in that respect. The increases were for, at the intersections on Chestnut, there's some handholds in the ground, they're junction boxes essentially for the street wiring, streetlight wiring, and they were in pretty tough shape, and so when they tore out the sidewalk and everything, it was, it just made sense to, they couldn't get the right lids for them and everything else and get them to match right, so it just made sense to replace them while we were there. So that's one of the increases. The other one was, one of the hydrants, the assemblies come preassembled at a certain depth, we make an assumption at what, educated assumption at what the depth were, it was a little bit too high, had to cut it off, lower it down to the proper level, so that was what the adjust hydrant item was, so total was an add of eighty, eight thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and forty-two cents.
Support.
A move to approve this change order by Council Freely, being supported by Council Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Item number two is an update on the medical insurance premiums. We had scheduled the insurance committee meeting, but we didn't have a quorum, so we didn't meet officially, but we did talk about the notice we've received from P E regarding our medical rates for twenty twenty six. We do have Erin Underland from Range Reliable Agency here to answer any questions as well and to talk about our insurance plan. Yes, there is an increase for twenty six, but I know personally it's not as large as some other people have seen. I don't know if you want to discuss that, Erin, what other clients are getting or seeing as an increase.
Good morning, please turn that light on to green. Take your name for the record and welcome to the committee home meeting, sir.
Thank you. I'm Erin Underland at the Range Reliable Agency here in town. I'm here just to discuss the health insurance renewal with the P E program. This year, the health insurance renewal for the high option and the H S A option are increased just under ten percent. It's basically a ten percent increase compared to last year. We've got four members in the high option single plan, we have five in the high option family plan, and in the H S A single, we have fifty-four, and in the H S A family plan, we have ninety-four. A few years ago, when P E first came in, one of their biggest selling points was more of a stable increase rate over the years, and that, they really have delivered that. This year, some of the other groups that I deal with, you know, the small group market rates of Blue Cross Blue Shield, they took a twenty percent rate increase, and that's everyone across the board. Medica's rate increase was right around twelve to fifteen, so we're seeing a higher rate of increase with some of the other groups than what we've seen with P E. Looking at the H S A rates, you know, for two thousand twenty six, it's nine sixty-six eighty for a single, just under twenty-six hundred for the family, that is relatively competitive, and it still is, so I really don't recommend a change. I think the employees have been kind of used to the different plan from when we first had switched from the Northeast Service Co-op Plan. And I'll be attending the employee fair here in a few days, and if anybody has any questions, we can sit down and go over the, you know, networks and the providers, and so I'll be available then, too, so. Want to have any questions?
Is this increase in the, in the medical premiums, is that some of it passed on to the employee?
Essentially, yes, it's not directly passed on, but there's split, it's also adjusted by the amount of the.
Split is adjusted, that's what was the question I wanted to ask, thank you. Any questions from, from Mr. Underland here, and respect to the premiums, Council Box Snyder?
Thank you, thanks for the presentation today. Britt, I'm curious, have we updated the twenty twenty six budget to reflect these changes as well?
Sherry had projected it was going to be a ten percent increase, so that's.
Wonderful, thank you.
One more thing, too, before I sit down, I just want to, I compared the twenty twenty five benefits to the twenty twenty six benefits from a deductible copay standpoint, they're exactly the same, so there's no changes on that side of it, so.
How about the dental premiums?
Dental is through Delta Dental, and I think Megan's a little more well-versed in this than I am, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mr. Underland, appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Erin.
Any other questions for Mr. Underland from Range Reliable? Thank you. Megan?
Just talking about the dental increases, I think the dental usage saw a little bit of an increase, so they were suggesting perhaps an increase to the employees, but I think we're actually covering it because we did increase it. I guess at this point, I wouldn't recommend increasing. We've covered it, plus a little bit of questions.
Any questions regarding the dental premiums? Okay, next item, please.
The next one is an agreement that we're requesting to have approved for the administration of the paid family medical leave program, and this is a new, a new thing that launches January first, twenty twenty six. I did put a little synopsis of what it is on page twenty-one. It's a new statute that both the employee and employer, and I'm hoping Joy or Megan can jump in and help me here, because this is a very complicated, and I've been kind of staying out of it, but very complicated process. The Minnesota paid leave requires that the employer and employee both pay tax to cover a paid leave time for all employees. This is going to affect, of course, all the insurance, all the negotiations with contracts, but at this moment, we do need to have some way to administer this plan, and I'm going to turn this over to both Joy and Megan, because like I said, I have been kind of staying out of it just a little bit, but.
I'm, well, I guess I don't know exactly what the questions are, but there's, we don't have a choice, everybody in Minnesota is going to be participating in the, in the paid leave, so really, our options at this point are, do we self-manage and go with the state option, or do we basically pay the company that we're already paying the short term and long term to manage it for us? And I think what we've evaluated so far was, it would cost the same, maybe less, to actually have the N I S, Madison National Life or National Insurance Services to manage it for us, plus less staff time on our part managing that. What will happen is we'll have to, of course, pay the premiums to them to manage this, but we'll be saving about equal or maybe more on our short-term disability, because we will be using less short-term disability for our employees, as they'll be getting paid a portion of that from the, the paid family medical leave.
I have a question, please, then we'll go to Council Johnson. So I know it's difficult to project, but how, what's the anticipated cost to the city, and not to, not necessarily to administer it, but would you anticipate the uses of this to be? Is there a way to measure that? I don't imagine there is, but do you anticipate there's going to be a, some production loss of work as a result of this, because of the expansion of the authority for a family to take this leave?
I don't anticipate that. We have a really robust short-term disability leave policy already, and we already have the earned sick and save time where, you know, basically, that's, if you need it, you use it, so that's been available to our employees for the past two years already. I don't see a change in usage.
So they need, do they need to exhaust all their vacation and sick time before they're eligible for this paid medical leave?
No, this actually will happen first, so they will be getting a portion of their leave time paid through the paid family medical leave, and then they will have the option either, whether or not, depending on contract-wise, it turns into a portion of that would be short-term, because it's two-thirds, they get like basically two-thirds of their pay up to a max, so they would leave, they would use this leave in conjunction, probably with their sick leave or short-term, depending on, on the contracts and the policies.
Okay, thank you. Council Johnson?
Mayor, Council Motley was just asking me, it's, I even get this because of the program through my subbing job, which is once or twice a week, so, and I think that the long-term, the long-term benefits of having them knowing the system, we'd probably have to call them anyway to ask them questions about it, so I think it's a good investment for the city staff, as well as having the experts deal with the expert stuff. So I think it's a good idea, do we need a, a motion today to, so I'll make the motion just to continue the discussion, I'll make a motion that we contract with Milwaukee, whomever.
Madison National Life.
That's what, Madison National Life, to manage this state mandate program.
Support for discussion.
A move by Council Johnson and supported by Council Box Snyder, further discussion. Council Box Snyder?
Thank you. What is the anticipated cost of contracting with them, and how is that budgeted for twenty twenty six?
I don't have the dollar amount in front of me, I'll get that to you.
Seventy-six thousand two hundred and thirty-five.
Seventy-six thousand two hundred and thirty-five?
And how is that budgeted in our twenty twenty six budget?
We have to break it down by the number of employees in department, because it'll be by per employee thing, and then that will change based on negotiations with staff, because we can charge the employees up to fifty percent of the tax, and there's a whole thing to this that we'll have to work with all the unions on. You'll see that, we'll probably create a line for this in there to just delineate between short-term, long-term, and then this, and sick leave and all those other benefits we have.
Thank you.
I don't think the cost will be increased, it'll just, we'll be moving stuff around to accommodate this cost. Like Megan said, it's kind of like, if you have ever been on workers' comp, or workers' comp pays two-thirds, and then you can use whatever you want to supplement, it's the same prin, principle. You go on, leave, you have a baby, you have twelve weeks vacation, two-thirds of it will come from the state, and then one-third comes from whatever, if you have vacation left or comp time left, or personal days, or whatever it may be.
Thank you. And then how did we determine that we think it would be cheaper to use the contractor service versus our staff?
We know what it's going to, what it costs for short-term disability right now, and we already have to pay that no matter if our staff does it or not. This will reduce that cost, and it will not require staff time to track the two-thirds, one-third, the doctor appointments, the doctor, you know, all those things that go into these kind of illnesses, getting the, they'll track down the doctor notes, the verification of medical necessity and all those other things.
Thank you.
So it's going to cost us seventy-six thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars?
Correct.
For a year?
Correct.
Contract this out?
Correct. But it will reduce the amount we pay for short-term disability now.
Thank you.
Also, we would have to pay that to this, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I, we would have to pay that to the state, we're paying for it either way, so we either pay the contractor, or we pay the state, in tax, in the form of a tax.
Either way?
Mm-hmm.
Council Freely, we had his hand up first, and then we'll go to Council Motley, Council Freely.
So we're voting on going with this, or am I going to be provided a comparative cost analysis between us doing it versus them doing it?
It's going to, like Megan mentioned, we, if we did it ourselves, the staff would have to do the time, and the state still gets paid that dollar amount. Whereas if we go with them, they do all the, they do the majority of the work, and we have the company that's going to also be your long-term disability provider, in case you go past the twelve weeks, you're already in their system, so it takes a huge step out for everybody, is that you're already there. So if you end up with cancer and need six months off, you can use your flow rate seamlessly into the long-term plan without having to do anything else other than what you've already done.
Council Motley?
Might be a little too early to ask, but Joy, do you have any opinions on this, or anything you want to?
Yeah, Jody, would you please come forward?
Sorry to put you on the spot, but I'm, okay, thank you.
And turn the light to green, and please introduce yourself, so we all know you, but.
Joy Rudabush, I'm new H R coordinator here for the city of Virginia.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, it's my second day, so I don't have a lot, I actually am doing a little, a WebEx thing tomorrow concerning this, so I'll have more information if you wanted to hold off, and I can have more information for you. I think that, as far as I understand, you use short-term disability, and then you can choose this, if it's the family medical leave side, you have to have like a specific emergency and doctor's note, so there are some logistic things that go with that that would have to be turned in, so as far as the administrative side, I think it probably is a lot of extra staff time, and if it offsets the short-term to use somebody other than us, then that probably is the best way to go. I just, because I'm brand new, I can't say for sure what my opinion on that would be, but, so, I can report back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, I thank you, Council Motley, Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, so I, I guess I would, I would maintain my motion, because then we can have the rest of the information on Friday for Tuesday's meeting, to not put this off anymore, so I, we can always say no on Tuesday's meeting, so I will maintain my motion.
Okay, it was moved, was it supported? Yes, by Council Box Snyder, further discussion. Council Box Snyder?
I was going to say the same thing that Council Johnson just said as well, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number five is, comes from the Street Alley Committee meeting that was held on October eighth, twenty twenty five. Gary, do you want me to keep going, or do you want to take over? The first item was a request to approve the curb cut at seven twenty North Hoover Road.
So moved.
Yeah, so we'll call on Matt if we need any more, any more questions or anything.
Moved to approve by Council Johnson, is there support?
Part.
By Council Motley, further discussion. Council Box Snyder?
Thank you, what is the total cost that this will be?
I don't believe it's any cost to us, it's just a, it's just that they have to have permission to create a curb cut onto our road.
Yeah, they'll do it.
Thank you.
I believe it's already done, to tell you the truth, but.
Thank you, well.
I drove by that the other day, I'm like, oh, that's new.
It's easier to get forgiveness than it is to get permission. So it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
There was discussion regarding the repair and replacement maintenance of the Sixteenth Street South between Southern Drive and Sixth Avenue, which is the highway fifty, it should be Sixteenth Avenue, isn't it? Sixteenth Street, the highway fifty-three, Frontage Road, oh, I know what you're talking about, yes, and we directed staff to meet with Mindot to discuss the repair of the road and the issues on Sixteenth Street South, this is that portion that runs from Southern Drive along fifty-three to Sixth Avenue, but, yes, okay, thank you, Matt.
Matt?
Morning again, I don't really have anything other than what Britt just said to add to that, unless anybody has any questions.
I think we should be approaching the state to have this repaired, so this is a motion to allow staff to do so. So moved.
Support.
Moved by Council Johnson, supported by Council Box Snyder, further discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Was moved and supported to authorize proceeding with the local partnership program funding application for the Sixteenth Street South and, street improvements.
Support.
Moved by Council Johnson, Council Motley, and supported by who? Council Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
The meeting Matt had discussed, the local road improvement program, which is called L R I P Funding from Mindot, and we have used it in the past, we can apply it up to one point five million for the Sixth Avenue project, it was moved and supported to authorize applying for the L R I P Funding for the Sixth Avenue Street Improvement Project.
So moved. Moved to approve by Council Johnson, supported by Council Freely, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, Council Beyondish?
Thank you. The Sixth Avenue Street Improvement, which one?
That's the one that we've been discussing over by, by Public Utilities, yep.
Okay, so is that the street project you were talking about, going all the way down to where the hotel is? That street project?
Yes, the, the alley off of Sixth Avenue, half a block south of Chestnut, over to the, be over to First Street, or to Fifth Avenue, I mean.
So it's the alleyway?
There's, it's an all, it's, it's, Sixth Avenue is the main corridor of the project, and then there's a couple of connecting alleys on either side that, that we're going to do as part of it, which we're going to talk about on the next item, actually.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moved and supported, further discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
If you just want to roll into the next discussion, that'd be wonderful.
Yep, so, we were talking originally, if you remember, that the Sixth Avenue project, which is inclusive of these other things that I was just talking about, was going to get designed this year, starting into construction, we're going to have to phase it into two phases. We're going to have to phase it into two phases. We're going to start construction next summer, tear everything up, put it back together, come back and tear it up again in '27, wrap it all up, and then come back and finish it in '28. We've been meeting as Jim and myself and Public Utilities and we've come up with a, a way where we think we can do the project a little more efficiently, which is going to have us this summer, cutting, scaling the project way back and making some temporary water connections to get that chance of freezing the water main out from underneath that Public Utilities steam plant building. We're going to be able to do that and add in the alley that Counsel Beyondich was talking about, as well as the alley just south of the water treatment plant at Virginia Public Utilities, which is our connecting alley for what we're tying all these utilities into. So prep work, basically. It's, it's not going to be, you know, $50,000, but it's going to be prep work for the bigger project. And then we'll tackle the big project all at once and we won't have to tear up Sixth Avenue twice, the entire corridor twice, in 2027. And that will allow us a little bit more time to try and get some more funding and it will just, it'll make the project more economical, more efficient. We can remove all of the steam line conflicts that are, because the steam line will be shut down next fall. So it really just worked out to where, and it will give us more time. Jim's got his camera. I just found out. We finally got the camera. So now we can, Jim, it'll give Jim's guys time to go in and do the televising that we need. So it, it, financially, it makes sense and just practicality-wise, it makes sense. So that's what we're, we're looking to do.
I will make a motion to approve the altering of the timeline for the Sixth Avenue project.
Part. A motion by Counsel Freely, supported by Counsel Motley. Further discussion, Counsel Johnson and then over to Counsel Beyondich. Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. And Matt, I just want to thank you and the others. This is the kind of stuff that we pay you all to do that doesn't, isn't part of public meetings. It's stuff that the professionals handle, they talk, they sit down, they work on it. And it's what you bring back to us and we make those decisions. And I truly appreciate you to, you know, the, the public perception of tearing up Sixth Avenue twice, I can see people coming here going, why didn't we do this better? And what you're doing is exactly those efficiencies that we don't have the knowledge as an elected body to know about that you and your professional cohorts do. So I appreciate the time you all have put into this and I'm happy that we are able to approve a different or an altered project. And having a half a summer off from road construction in Virginia won't be a bad thing either. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. Counsel Beyondich.
Thank you. When you apply for this funding from the previous motion, how long does that carry? Is there a timeline on that funding?
Yep. It, it would be 2026 to 2028. So we'd have to expand it all by '28.
And by applying for other funds for this, would, do you anticipate we would be able to do that? Because I know when people came here for the hearing on that, there, it was not acceptable or good from, because there's so few in that stretch. And I believe, is Ms. Pacula, is that what her letter she was referring to? So it affects less people, so the amounts are so much higher, so.
And, and, and we are, we, we actually gave a bonding bill presentation to the bonding committee when they came, the House Bonding Committee, when they came through, was it last week?
Yes, yep, last week.
So we've got, we've got some more irons in the fire trying to, and actually, we're doing an I triple R B grant application as well. So, and there'll be, again, by pushing, postponing it, the bulk of the work another year will give us a little more time to try to pull some of that together. The other thing that I'll just mention, we're, we're looking at a couple of other things now that Jim's got his camera and trying to do, I've got some ideas on how we might be able to be a little more efficient on a couple of the other components of the project as well. When I say efficient, I mean cost-effective and, and construction-wise efficient. So gives us a little more time to try to do what we can to make it a little more feasible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Box Snyder.
Thank you, and thank you for all your work on this. I did read the email, but just so the general public knows, are there any late fees, any penalties, anything like that with kind of delaying this timeline?
No. Thank you. Counsel Johnson.
Since it is a change, I'd like to see that we make sure we notify all the affected people in the area that, hey, our plans have changed and this is what you can expect. So I just thought I'd bring that up and with the help of, of staff, make sure we're being open and transparent to those folks as well. Thanks.
Thank you. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Want to go on?
Want to keep going? Counsel Motley's been waiting for this one. She's laughing already, I can tell. All right, so this is going to be a, I'm going to try to explain this as clearly as I can. This one's kind of hard to explain, but I will do my best. So you as a city, we've talked about this several times, you have, you are a city over 5,000 people, so therefore you have state aid, municipal state aid dollars that come into the city every year through MinDOT State Aid Program. Rewind back several months when the 14th, 20th Southern Drive project started, we had a discussion on, we've got state aid money going out onto all kinds of projects right now. I shouldn't say all kinds, probably three or four. We had a discussion as, at the council level of how much of your state aid money did you want to allocate to this 14th and 20th project? I'm just referring 14th and 20th. The Southern Drive, Chestnut Street, there's a whole bunch of them, but I'm going to call it the 14th and 20th project. And you agreed to roughly 1.28 million dollars, I think was the number we came, came back to. So once that was agreed to, I went, I requested it from state aid. We got, we get 95% of it right off the bat, so that 1.2 million dollars that's shown on the agenda, that went right into the city's account to help pay for the, the portions of the project that were eligible for state aid. In the meantime, as the financing people were working through the, the, the general obligation bond and the payback for the general obligation bond, one of the mechanisms the city has used in the past is a separate bond that you can take out through state aid, where you dedicate for the next 15 years, a certain amount of money out of your state aid account to help pay back 1.28 million dollars of your general obligation bond. Okay? So you following me so far or completely confused? Bear with me, it might make a little more sense when we get going. So to fund this project, the city took out a general obligation bond. You have to pay that general obligation bond back. Different ways to pay that back, utility fees, assess, special assessments, state aid, bonding money, things like that. That's how you pay that bond back. So essentially what you're doing is you're, you're dedicating, what I was just explaining is you're dedicating a certain dollar amount out of your municipal state aid account every year to help pay that money back. So say it's $50,000. So every January, you get allotted about $400,000, give or take, to your construction account. They would just take that $50,000 out of that allotment right away, dedicated towards this state aid bond. Does that make sense? Okay. So that's what I was referring to, that the financing people worked through, and when I say financing people, the, the bonding company and George Ilertson and those, that group that works with you. So they, because that was a discussion we had had in the past about doing that, they had went through and, and done that process as well. So what essentially what ends up happening is we committed 2.4 million dollars of our state aid money to this project instead of 1.2. So while at front that seems scary and maybe is a problem, it, it's not as scary as it seems. We just have to decide how to move forward with it. So we will, my recommendation is, the 1.2 million dollars that is set aside in the state aid bond to help pay back your general obligation bond, that's already set. So we have to just go along with that. So that can be dedicated to the 14th and 20th project. Now let's take the 1.29 million dollars that we already have in our account. We have more than 1.2 million dollars, or more, yeah, more than 1.2 million dollars that's eligible for state aid reimbursement on the 14th project. We just chose as a council only to use 1.2 million dollars. There's more money we can use to pay for that project. There's closer to 1.5 million, 1.6 million. So my recommendation is, is that we just say, all right, of that 1.2 million dollars, we just use another 300 or 400,000 to help draw down the costs of the project, using your state aid account. So you're going to have the 1.2 from the bond plus another 400,000. So in essence, you're applying 1.6 million instead of 1.2 million to this project. That remotely makes sense? Okay? Then you're going to have in your account, sitting in your account, you're going to have $800,000 left, which is great. That's money normally, on one hand, you could turn around and pay it back to state aid, which you would eventually get back again someday. But rather than do that, we'll just keep it in the city's account and we can apply that towards the next state aid project, which is going to be Sixth Avenue. So we just have to make sure that, and this is what the Street and Alley Committee stressed very strongly, that the money that's left over when this is done is flagged to be spent on Sixth Avenue, not used somewhere else, so that that money doesn't get lost in the shuffle. So essentially what we're looking at doing here today with the action, like I said, this is very confusing. It would be, I don't know if I could even draw it up better on a diagram. It is, it took me several phone calls with state aid finance to figure this out because it's not that straightforward. So, but in the end, my recommendation to the city is, let's apply as much state aid money as we can to the 14th and 20th project. Let's maximize our, our expenditures there. And whatever money is left over out of that, let's say out of 2.4 million, maybe actually out of 1.2 million, we'll earmark it in the financials. Megan can do her little thing behind the scenes and make sure it gets marked off. And then it will get applied to a future state aid project, which in this case will be Sixth Avenue. Does that kind of make sense? At least, kind of? Okay. How'd I do?
Counsel Motley.
I think, I think you did pretty good. That's, that's tough to explain because Counsel Freely and the mayor and I are on the Street and Alley and it is very complicated, more or less. I am not even going to attempt to what you just said, but after what you just said, it is my recommendation to go also with what Matt has to say. So I'll make the motion to allocate the funding and move the motion forward. Thanks.
Part. Moved by Counsel Motley and supported by Counsel Johnson to allocate the maximum state aid money that is allowable for the 14th and 20th Street project. And then the remainder of that, 1.209, $430,000 that isn't utilized, remain in the account for the Sixth Avenue project. Further discussion, Counsel Box Snyder.
Thank you. So the 2.4 million that you referenced, that's the bond that we took out, the amount of the bond?
Nope. The bond was much more than that. The 2.4 was the amount of state aid money. So you have a state aid account. 2.4 was the amount of your state aid dollars that you committed to this project. And half of that is going to be committed over the next, what, I think 15 years is the term of the bond. So it's a small portion over, so we're still going to have state aid money coming in every year. Just a portion of it's going to go towards that bond. The other 1.2 is just a lump sum amount that we got sent right to the account. That's a typical, how the typical process goes. So the two, the bond was for seven, eight million dollars? And the, the other payback mechanisms are the special assessments and some of the other, the other grants that we get, things like that, that pay that back. So the, the total project cost was seven-ish million. This 2.4 won't be quite 2.4, it'll be 1.5 in the end. We'll help pay that back.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm tracking, actually. I, I think this makes sense.
Ask Megan, she's the finance person.
I got, I was a little panicked at first when Matt emailed me, sorry Megan, when Matt emailed me and said we overdrived down money. I thought, oh boy, now what? So this actually is a great way to do it. We're still using it on street projects as intended. That's what we want to use it for. And that's basically what they said. As long as you're using it on street projects, you're fine. You know, but just know that you have that money committed to whatever and you just need to know how we want to use it, so.
It just has to be committed to a project that has, that is on your state aid system.
Right.
Yeah. Thankfully, MinDOT's not going to make us pay it back or anything like that. I mean, it's, normally, this isn't the typical way that it would be done, but it's, it's fine, it's all good.
Hey, thank you. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, please.
Matt, the next one was the culverts on 16th Avenue South. It was moved and supported to allow Matt to obtain a cost analysis and provide suggested funding mechanisms for the 16th Avenue South culvert project.
So moved. Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson. Is there support?
All support for discussion.
Support by Counsel Freely for discussion. Further discussion, Counsel Freely.
Let's discuss what those funding mechanisms might be. And my understanding is there's three culverts that go under that avenue, one of which is already completely collapsed, correct?
Yeah, there's three of them. They're fairly large. They take a lot of the drainage coming out of town, pass it through under the state highway and off into wherever it goes from there. One of them is collapsed. The other two are on the verge, they're not in very good condition. And they're probably about 15 feet deep if you drive by. It's just north of, of the, the Credit Union on 16th Avenue, just before the intersection of Hoover Road and, and 169. And if you look off to the side as you drive by, it drops straight down, that's where those culverts are.
And ultimately, it would maximize the efforts that Jim and crew have been making by Northern Engine to be able to continue that flow unobstructed.
Correct. That, that's the bottleneck right now. Yep.
All right, thank you.
Just think if we had the Cuffey curve over there.
Just think.
We don't have that problem. Way back in the day.
So the discussion of funding mechanisms have been what?
We're discussing it right now.
Yeah, yeah, that was that resolution we did the other day for I triple R B. We're looking at things to do, what do we call it, the 26 citywide infrastructure, something, a big, long name we had for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moved and supported for the discussion, Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Is, is there an opportunity to have discussion with the city of Mountain Iron and the state and the county because of that being part of a longer infrastructure issue with the draining of Silver Creek? That's what we're talking about, Silver Creek going under our road, under the county, under the railroad. Like, there's, so, and maybe there's some railroad options as well for, for that. Like, so, and maybe there's some railroad options as well for that. But I guess those would be some other areas I'd ask that we look at to see, maybe DNR because it's a waterway, some other options moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Moved and supported for the discussion, Counsel Bachsneider.
Thank you. What exactly is being moved and supported? So it looks like we're reviewing the cost analysis and discussing the funding mechanisms. So what, what action are we taking on this right now?
Made the motion.
To move that discussion forward, so that at some point we'll know what those funding mechanisms will be and how we can move forward from there.
Yeah, we're not, we're not approving it. We're just moving it forward to get that analysis.
It has been moved and supported to move this forward. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 12 was approve the resolution for professional services agreement with SCH for the 16th Avenue culvert project.
So moved. Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson. Is there support?
All right.
By Counsel Motley. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Bachsneider.
Just for the general public's knowledge, can you please let us know the cost of this and how it's budgeted?
Is that what it was? I'm drawing a blank right now. 34,000?
No.
Oh, page 34. Sorry. I didn't quite get to my, there we go. Yes. So this is, this is to take it, to get some geotechnical work done, get the bidding documents together. Of course, along the way, we will do a, the typical process where we'll get a design put together and a cost estimate, so we'll have a better idea of what this cost is to help figure out the funding before we ultimately go out for bids. But the cost is, the total cost, if we end up needing easements, is 40,450 dollars. I put a hourly $5,000 fee in there to help with easements if we need them. Hopefully, that right away is all squared away because it was a county road at one time. But every single project we've done, I think we've had to monkey around with easements and stuff, so I just put that in there just in case. So 40,450.
And where is the funding coming from?
It's coming from the community development. We, remember, we increased the professional services for, it's these kind of projects that we pay for until they become a project. So they go out of the community development, then it becomes a project, it goes into the project fund.
And this is the 2026 budget?
It'll be a portion of both. It'll be some of this year and some, most of it next year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And this is up to 40,000 dollars?
Yes.
Up to.
Up to.
Thank you.
Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I did notice on the agenda, on the actual agenda itself, we are missing a motion from the Street and Alley meeting to authorize approval of the application of the MPCA for a storm watershed analysis grant.
Oh, yeah. So moved.
All right.
Moved by Counsel Johnson, supported by Counsel Motley. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Bachsneider.
Can you just say that again? I'm sorry.
It was a motion to approve the application to the MPCA for a stormwater watershed analysis. And what we were looking to do was possibly doing some more smoke testing throughout the town. It's a grant that would allow up to 500,000 with a 10% match.
Thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Item number 13 is we did go out for RFPs for the auditing services. Pam and I did speak to quite a few firms. I think it was seven total that we spoke with, and we got three responses back. Find my mental here. We received three responses back, or three proposals back. The lowest one is Walker, Drew and Hani here in Virginia at 47,000 for 26, 49,350 for 27, and 51,815 for 28. And if we need to do a federal audit, if you remember, federal audits are only needed in those years that we spend. It used to be 750, and I think next year it goes up to a million. Federal money, you have to do a separate federal audit for that fund itself. So that 5,000 per year is only the years we need it. We will need it for this year because we have the $3 million alley project going on in the Steve Johnson's area, in the Hay Street South area. There wasn't a firm that was slightly cheaper, although they were from Georgia. They have no clients in Minnesota yet. They're looking to break into the Minnesota market. And speaking with Megan, we just weren't sure that we were ready to be the guinea pigs for Minnesota, quite yet. Dubuque, Iowa is their closest, closest city that they're working on right now.
Thank you. Counsel Johnson.
And I've sat on several boards in which we have done the same RFP process. And one of the challenges with a new firm is them needing to learn everything about the city and all of our processes. And we thought, the audit took a long time this year and last year. My experience is that it takes a really long time for a new firm. So I think that Walker, Drew and Hani is the best option as they are familiar with our books. We do have a good relationship with them and that they do, they do a good job. It is, you know, government accounting is complicated at best. And so I would like to move that we continue with Walker, Drew and Hani moving forward.
Board. Moved by Counsel Johnson and supported by Counsel Freeleeb to move to the council level, council meeting for next Tuesday to renew the contract for Walker, Drew and Hani. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Bachsneider.
Thank you. The only other thing I just want to add is that firm in Georgia, while they came in cheaper, it looks like that that doesn't include some things, so it's probably going to be about the same or more expensive in the end.
I mentioned that too. Thank you. That the quote did not include audit prep or accounting adjustments, nor the OSA annual reporting where the other two firms did. So that, just want to point that out.
Thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Just one quick question. So this is an increase from last year's audit costs?
I think it's 2,000 or 1,500 dollars.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item number 14 is a request from Jim Rossett from Public Works to purchase two new snowplow blades in the amount up to 45,000 for the Public Works Department. Here, packet on page 51, you'll see the dollar amounts, 22,099. We need two of those. That's the price for one.
I will move this purchase forward as we can, as there are two counselors missing. So I will move this discussion to the city council meeting.
Counsel Johnson makes a move, move this up to the council meeting for final decision. Is there support?
All support.
Support by Counsel Freeleeb. Further discussion, Counsel Motley.
So where would the money be coming from for this?
In the budget meeting, I had put the contingency update in there. I put that in the contingency line item to show you where it'd be if this was purchased
Jim, you don't have anything left in your budget where this could come out of your department?
We sure could. I mean, we definitely could take it out of there, but.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Contingency fund and Public Works are all general funds, so it's all the same big pot of money.
It has been moved and supported to move to the city council. The request to purchase two new snow blades in the amount of up to 45,000 dollars for Public Works. Is there any further discussion? Yes, please. Jim, come on forward, please, and then we'll go to Counsel Freeleeb.
Morning. I just wanted to say, these two plows I'm looking at replacing, one's 24 years old, one's 25 years old. There's nothing left of them. They're becoming a safety issue. We put them on the truck, they fold up under the truck. We'll probably do damage to the truck with them. So they do go on a dump truck, a loaded dump truck. They're out every day during the snowstorm. So something I want to make you aware of, you know, it's not, I'm not out here to spend money, but I'm looking at us still running a city and having to do the work, the general work that we're scheduled to do.
Very good. Thank you, Jim. Counsel Freeleeb.
And then I'm sure, although nominal, is there some kind of like, we trade in and/or scrap out? Is there any value to the scrapping of the old blades or?
Absolutely nothing.
Nothing?
They were discontinued, I believe, 10 years ago, so you can't get parts from them. Even, we've been fabricating parts over the years.
But I mean, like, if you ship them to homes, you can't?
Yeah, we'll get, and we're not even gaining much out of homes anymore because they're coming to get the scrap from us. I will load them on a truck and send them out there and I'll get, you know, a few hundred dollars for tonnage out of it. But it's better than throwing them in the bin and then not getting anything out of them, so.
And it's, the blades exclusively or the apparatus as well?
It's the actual plow that moves right to the front of the dump truck.
Okay.
The whole assembly from the front of the hitch. So it's, just pins on there. The hitches are still good. I believe we would get new hitches with that cost though, so.
Thank you.
And they just bolt on.
Thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Jenny. Roll call, please, Megan.
I can do it. I just need.
Roll call, please, Jenny.
Mayor Cuffey.
Aye.
Counsel Johnson.
Aye.
Counsel Motley.
Yes.
Counsel Paulson's absent. Counsel Beyondit's absent. Counsel Bachsneider?
No.
And Counsel Freeleeb.
Aye. A motion fails.
It passes, Mayor, because I, just moving it forward. I'm not.
You're just moving it forward?
Yes, sir.
That was the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes and is to move it forward to the council meeting as opposed to purchasing it. So thank you. Thanks for that clarification, Counsel Johnson.
Absolutely.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Oh, we did already vote. Okay, thank you. Motion passes.
Jim. Item number 15 is a request to approve the resolution to hire a patrol officer.
I will move that, we forward this to the council meeting on Tuesday.
Right. A move by Counsel Johnson to move this to the council meeting for a final decision. Is there support?
All support for further discussion.
Support by Counsel Freeleeb for further discussion. Further discussion, Counsel Freeleeb, and then over to Counsel Motley.
So I know we don't have a full roster. This will bring us up to a fuller roster, but how many short will we continue to be?
Mayor, Council, good morning.
Morning.
So currently, we are sitting at, to include myself in chief, would be 22 officers. Understand, though, we do have one officer that is going to be leaving law enforcement on a medical here, probably within the next month or so. We do have one officer currently out on injury. We have another officer that is waiting to go out on shoulder surgery. He's been very patient with that because he knows we're short-staffed. We've been rocking two-man day shifts for the most part, which typically you have four officers on a day shift. So needless to say, these officers are much needed to be hired. The, we're kind of in a weird predicament, and I've talked to you guys about it in the past, but when we have people that come available that actually do apply, I mean, it's, it's like feast and famine. So when we get somebody that applies that's worthwhile, we need to take action, take action in a hurry. I just looked on the postboard site, just in our region, which is just, you know, pretty much the Upper Lakes area. There's well over 30 departments currently hiring in our area. Pretty much everybody is, let's be honest. So again, I highly suggest and encourage a vote to at least move this forward to consider at the council meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion and support on the floor? Thank you. Any further discussion or any questions for Assistant Chief Nicola?
Can I just discuss a process?
Pardon?
Can I discuss the process? Why we have to approve the resolution? I can't do a background check or a medical until we have a resolution from the council allowing us to hire. So this is the very first process. The law changed, I think, in '23 or '22 where it stated we don't get that information and we're not privy to it until we have made a conditional offer of employment. And because I'm not a city manager, I can't do that without council approval. So sometimes when you guys make a resolution and allow us to offer, they don't pass the background or the physical, but I can't move forward until we have a resolution.
So you have to make an offer contingent upon the background investigation. Thank you.
To get that, even beholding the information, I have to have an offer.
Correct. Hey, what is the motion? Reback the motion, please, if you would, Jenny.
This was moved by Counsel Johnson, supported by Counsel Freeleeb to afford approval for a resolution for hire of patrol officers to the council meeting on Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Is there any further discussion? I support it now, and I support it at the council level meeting moving forward. So it has been moved and supported and move it. Is there any, to the council meeting for additional council action? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Item number 16 is a request from the Range Trail Committee and the Quad Cities ATV Club for a donation of crush fill in an amount, a dollar amount of up to 3,600 dollars.
So moved. Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson. Is there support?
All support.
Support by Counsel Freeleeb. Further discussion? So there was a letter by the ATV club to, and the letter indicated, and I think there's some discussion that, with Mr. Detloff, that the city was going to provide this in-kind services, or 3,600 dollars. And not for in-kind, but for 3,600 dollars. This is for that trail. And we have crushed rock up on the, by Range Landscape, do we not, Jim? And there's enough there that, you know, we could make a in-kind donation to run that trail through Virginia. Thank you. Counsel Motley.
I had my own light off now, but.
I'm sorry.
Thanks. Yeah, I support this.
Thank you.
I think it's just important to point out for everybody's identification that the club would load haul and spread the fill at no cost to the city of Virginia. And by us providing this in-kind donation, they can use this as a match to another grant. So they get funds with this too.
Right, thank you. Counsel Johnson.
Thank you. So really, this is costing us nothing. It's scrap rock that we've already accumulated. It's not, we're just letting them take from our pile, so.
Correct.
Okay. So I think this is a great use of economic development funds at zero dollars. So I think this is great and appreciate the work, Jim, you and the, that trail system are doing. Thank you.
So it has been moved and supported. Further discussion, Counsel Bachsneider.
Thank you. And you briefly touched on this, but I'm, this, the one thing that's confusing me about the letter is that if Virginia could make this donation a fill with the dollar amount of 3,600, we would be able to leverage the match money from a grant. So they asking for the 3,600 in a check?
Nope. We're going to write them a letter back that would state that we are allocating the 300 yards of crushed concrete at a value of 3,600 dollars. And we understand you're going to load haul yourself, you have to have your own insurance, et cetera, et cetera. And then they'll take that letter and put it as part of their grant application.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next two items are closed session items. The first is the LALS labor negotiations, and this proportion of the meeting could be closed as per Minnesota statute 13D05 for labor negotiations. And the other item would be discussed the contract for animal control services of the Society of the Humane Society, which could be closed for the Minnesota statute 13D03 subdivision 3.
Oh, thank you.
Is there anything else before we go to?
Anything else before we move to closed session? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I had sent an email to the mayor and the airport authority. I have resigned my position as chair and on the airport authority due to family. I have two children in theater that are consuming my life. But Counselor Bachsneider has volunteered to take my place on the airport authority, and I would like to make a motion to appoint her effective November 1st to that authority.
Supporter? A motion by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Freely to appoint Counselor Bachsneider to replace Counselor Johnson on the airport authority. Thank you, Counselor Johnson, for serving all those years in that regard. Obviously, you're willing to accept this, right, Counselor Bachsneider?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
And, and just, Counselor Bachsneider has been at a couple of the meetings, so she will not be going in ice cold. And I think it'll be a very good fit to have some fresh perspective over there. So thank you, Jenny, for doing that.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Any other items to come before the committee that hold me today before we move to closed session? Looking for a motion to move from open session to closed session to discuss items 17 and 18 as indicated by our city administrator.
I'll make that motion to close.
Support.
Motion by Counselor Motley and supported by Counselor Bachsneider. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Those who are not part of this discussion, I ask you to vacate the council chambers at this time, and then we'll begin our discussion in earnest on both these items. Thank you.